Wait, when did I put it?
That's how I need quiet is all up.
Wait, I my O P M A. I need to stick this to my head, that's what I need to do. Alright, call to order, the um November nineteen, Tuesday, November nineteen, uh planning board, Zona Board of Adjustment Meeting of uh Flemington Borough. Uh and please rise as you're able for a place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, time, can I have a vocal, please, Alan?
Mayor Carrow and Gantara Fisaro are not present.
Oh, let me do this first.
You can.
Sorry.
That's right.
I wrote it down to do it correctly, and I still must. Not everybody, uh this meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Meeting Act, both adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hunterdon County Democrat and Korea newspapers on about February first, twenty twenty four, and January thirtieth, twenty twenty four. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted at Borough Flemington Municipal Building located at Thirty Eight Park Avenue, and any handicapped accessible entrances there too, posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons if any requesting copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video, or maybe rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding, any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider. In reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to a duty for hearing must be maintained at all times. Okay, now can we have the couple of calls?
Oh, I'm just going to move to win.
Oh, Adrian, she's excellent.
She should be joining anyway. Um, Mr. Champion?
Here.
Giffen?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Dasha?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Mr. Semino?
Here.
Ms. Swingle?
Here.
Mr. Echo?
Uh here.
Mr. Show?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
Uh Ms. Fisaro?
I'm here.
And um Mayor Carrow, uh Mr. Carrico and Mr. Chairman are excuse. I think Mr. Mayor Carrow is actually league.
Yes, yes. And so she'll, we'll see her next week. Um, okay, item one on the agenda is a period for public comments, this is for comments about items not on the current agenda. And is there anybody in person online that wishes to make a comment? I don't see any hands raised. Is there any hands missing in the section?
No.
No.
You're from the intended service. With no other.
Okay, perfect, so seeing now, we'll move on to item two, mayor comments, which I assume, being as the mayor is not here, we will skip to item three, council comments, Adrian?
I have no comments this week.
Alright, I'm sorry you're still feeling online, thank you for joining us, anyone?
Thank you.
Alright, um uh item four then, HPC comments, Dennis, do you have anything for us today?
No, we have our meeting tomorrow, so I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, and professional reports, um because we're missing two of our professionals. Anyway, I'll just ask the two, but here is a report that you would like to do at this point, do we want to do the um Chick-fil-A now, or you want to do that later, you you have a?
I think we have it on the.
We have it on the agenda, sorry, I missed that, yeah, right, we added it to the agenda, so we'll do that then, but nothing other than that would keep it all within the agenda items, okay. Perfect, so straight on to item six, approval of the minutes from the October thirty uh twenty twenty four special meeting. Any comments or um amendments? I had one, Alan, which was in the um penultimate paragraph. It mentions that. It's okay, um it mentions that it would come to the next meeting for discussion, but we'll need to change that to for update, because discussion means something very specific, so I just wanted to make sure that word was changed, so alright.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Has anybody, anybody got any other comments on those minutes? None, if not, then can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please? You you guys are gonna have to pull due to.
I'll move.
Oh, was that Dennis?
No, it was Brian.
Thank you, Brian, move there, Brian.
Second.
Melissa?
Yep.
Uh can we take a roll on that, please, Alan?
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mrs.
Tomorrow? Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Your cook?
Upstate.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
And Ms. Rattle?
Upstate.
Actually, I that was um you have no.
Oh, Ms. Rattle was um.
Well, um, but Ms. Swingle was the first alternate, and we have enough um for.
Alright, okay, um, okay, thank you, let's move on to item seven, the resolution for one ten Main Street LLC, application twenty twenty four oh seven.
We'll have that for the next.
We'll do that for the next meeting, okay. Right, straight on to um item eight, compliance, um this is Chick-fil-A Inc., block forty eight, block seven, and we already have a resolution on this, but this is, I think you need to fill us in on what this is.
Yep, absolutely, so if you take a look, I had counsel prepare a letter to you, and and you have it in front of you dated November eleven. Um and basically, what, when they went out to the property, and Bob's not here, but Beth and Bob and I have discussed this, to kick this around a little bit. Um, when they went out to the property, um after the approval to start construction specifically of the canopy, um the way I understand it is the canopy, as it was approved and designed, requires footings and supports, and where it was proposed to be located would interfere with the stormwater system that's currently on site. So their mechanism and and proposal won't resolve that, because less is basically just to reduce the size of the canopy. So that does not require any additional variances, um it does not require any additional relief, but it is a change from the site plan that was approved, so this board is allowed to uh make those changes, de minimis changes to approvals, if they constitute field changes. And typically, field changes, while they can be de minimis, and and you all are going to ask the board to make that particular finding here, um I usually like to associate it with something that actually is something that's resulting from what's going on in the field, as opposed to, uh you know, an applicant just deciding they want to do something a little bit different, that could qualify, but clearly here, this change is being proposed, um because they are realizing, once they've gotten out there, that they cannot construct exactly what was approved. So I feel from a legal perspective that that constitutes a field change, um Beth, I'm not going to speak for you, but Bob agrees as well. I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely, and you know, I would say that one of the biggest impacts from that application was the size of the canopy, and so this is not, I mean, it's not, but the the impact of this field change is that it's just reducing the visual impact, so I I do think that it's de minimis, but it's actually de minimis in towards a lesser impact.
And also, I'm presuming it would be in favor based on the fact that if we insisted on the original size, it would it would interfere with the stormwater system.
Oh, yeah, then it would certainly have to come back, absolutely.
Yeah, it's so, so it's a it's a double, double, like, positive, right?
Yeah, so what I would ask um is for someone to uh make a motion if they, you know, feel that that's appropriate, um to
approve this as a field change with the finding that it is a de minimis change from what was previously approved, and therefore um can be approved without any amended site plan or or other.
I'll move it.
Oh, sorry. Alright, so that was Brian and Jim.
Was Jeff.
Oh, it's Jeff, sorry. I see, they're not in the room.
Uh Brian was the motion, Jeff was the.
No, I'm.
No, Jeff, Jeff was the motion.
Jeff was motion and Jim.
Hi, listen.
Kim was Jim, I'm sorry.
It's back in. And we're not, we don't have to um quantify the reduction size of um that they are proposing.
They did submit an amended, well, they submitted a site plan that shows the reduced size, so that is now what's going to be on file.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say.
We have to go with that, it's obviously. Well, I'm worried specifically, I'm not sure they did that, so that when we're going for, you know, any other permits, or so what's on file.
Yeah, and a copy has been distributed to the uh construction officials.
Right, and your aspilts is going to show that.
And I will um let him know uh the decision that was made tonight.
Right.
And then, you know, for um minutes or or something like that, I would also.
And I will do a very quick resolution, just so again, we've got something in in the file that that shows that, I'll outline the case law, that specifically allows you to do that as well as your findings.
And I'm going to reference to that.
Correct.
So it's, yeah, I want to make sure that's captured, so that we're not just reducing it however they feel like.
Yeah.
And we we want to know exactly what we're agreeing to. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, um is it appropriate for me to add, do I ask the board if they have any queries on that before we go, or we have a motion, we can just vote?
See if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I always want to make sure I'm not like interfering with the system, if anybody um has any queries or comments or anything on that, that they want to make before we go for a vote, um raise your hand now, or forever hold your hand, and put you down. I'm not seeing anything, give everybody a few seconds to find that button. Anybody here to? No, I'm good, you're all good.
Is everyone eligible to vote on this?
Um, everyone, I would say everyone that participated in the original group will put splits between the sides, but we know who that is.
Does anybody remember, does anybody remember if they did not take part in the original one, because that might.
Oh, you know what, wait, hold on, I might have, I got it, I got it.
The document.
It's on the end of the resolution.
Yep, I got it, I have it.
We got it, don't worry.
Alright, the resolution. So, we have Mayor Carrow's not here, um Ms. Giffen?
You.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, well, we have motions, I think, so let's make sure first, so Jeff was not here, so Jeff can't make the motion.
Um.
So he did not motion.
But I didn't, I thought I was there on that application, no?
You were absent for the resolution.
I was there for the hearing.
You were there for the hearing, you were absent for the resolution.
Oh, well then, okay, then I'll I'll withdraw the motion, sorry.
Yeah, let's just, let's keep it with whoever voted on the actual resolution.
Was anyone there?
Um, you were there, yes.
Okay, make the motion.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second if I was there, I think.
No, you were not, I'm kidding, somebody else. We have um Michael Campion, Hannah and Brian.
All second.
Thank you, Hannah. So let's be quick, but it's my feelings.
Yeah.
Um.
You okay, Alan, you know what I mean?
Well, let me just um record this and. Um, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, alright, so and yeah, so let, you'll let the applicant down.
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, here we go, item nine, public hearing, National Pools and Spas, application twenty twenty four oh six, block forty nine, block one point oh one, seventy six Rayville Avenue, continued from October eighth, twenty twenty four.
Think I have to be promoted? That's.
Um, so you can, yes. And I noticed that we've only got the back of your chair on the video, um up there. We need to do some, that's not good enough, is it?
Oh.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But when he gets promoted, is he gonna?
We just see that one a little bit, just so we cast.
But isn't it when he gets promoted, the camera goes down?
Cam, well, there we go.
Oh.
There it is.
So.
There it is.
Yeah, that's a public sphere.
I keep myself muted.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, because the desktop, the desk.
So, good evening, Steven Groenberg, attorney in Flemington, New Jersey, on behalf of the applicant National Pools and Spas. This is our application for sea variance relief to allow signage that had already been placed upon the property uh by my client, um and the property is owned by Seventy Six Rayville Avenue LLC. They've uh been renting the property since two thousand and twenty two. Um, and quite honestly, we're here because we think, we we recognize that we need sign variance relief, but we think that the signage and the type of signage that's been placed there is actually really attractive, and is a much better zoning alternative than what uh your ordinance would limit it to be given the unique circumstances for this particular piece of property in this storefront. Um, so I do have a witness, and uh I would like him to come forward and be sworn. I provided proof of service and publication of the notice of hearing, and I think we were actually continued to this date previously.
So I don't believe we marked any exhibits at the last meeting, so we'll mark as A one, the application and supporting documentation. A two will be the notice of publication of the hearing, and PB one will be the board planners' time located October fourth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, and I have Peter Norritz, Norritz, Natski? Norotzki. From National Pools.
Can you spell your last name, Peter?
N A W R O T Z K I.
Thank you.
Yep. And if you can swear out.
Uh, yes, uh, just for the testimony, you're about to give this course the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Norotzki, what's your position with National Pools and Spas?
Uh, I've worked for them for twenty eight years, been a store manager for uh twenty years or so for them, uh I didn't store manager at the Flemington Stores, and they took it over from Water Wizards.
Sorry to interrupt you, but we don't have you on the picture, on the image. There we go, thank you.
I'll get you more in camera, you're more important. Um, so two thousand and twenty two, you began leasing the space uh, which used to be occupied by Water Wizard Pool and Spa?
Correct.
And I've marked, I actually have a packet of photographs, and we can either mark them individually, or just refer to the packet, because I have them all stapled.
That's up to you, um it might make it easier for the record, if we either want to reference them as separate exhibits, or reference the whole group and then do an A B C.
Why don't we do the whole group and do A B C?
Alright, so let's mark as A three, a group of photographs, there's how many?
Five.
Five photographs, and then we'll just identify each one as a A three.
Great.
We have these, the board can get a copy.
They're all right there.
Thanks, I'm passing it well, so. Um, and then, I'm thinking about photos at home, are these issued ahead of time, or?
I have a deep drive with them on, so we can share.
Or or we do the old, old fashioned technology thing, we're holding that up.
I have a friend.
Well, me too, I'm also.
Back to the use of that. It's always challenging. And I will try to share my screen, and I'm sending my request to share my screen. See that?
Yeah.
Great. Uh, sir, what what's depicted in A three, which is uh the first photo A?
I think that's. Yep. Oh, that's the old Water Wizard, what they look like, pretty, taking over for them.
So that's what the space looked like with the signage in place at the time when you took uh tenancy?
Yes, yep.
And they were a similar type of business as you, Chris?
Yes.
And they had signage on the windows, correct?
Yeah, 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 and they hung stuff inside, you could see them.
Okay. And why don't you describe the space for the board?
No, it's a retail store, we sell pools, spas, uh pool equipment, spas, uh stuff of that nature, so we use the entire square footage for hot tubs in the front, and computers up front, and in the back, we have our chemicals and stuff of that nature.
What type of computers do you have up front?
I don't know your recipe, I don't, my computer guy, I think Dells or something like that, you know, just your standard countertops.
And where do they form?
Uh, bringing people up and zooming in, finding out what they purchased in the past, stuff of that nature.
How would you describe the the windows in terms of the sunniness of it?
It's super, super hot up there, and very bright.
And was that a concern for you when you took space?
Yes, yeah.
Why was that a concern?
Uh, computers overheated almost immediately, I was moving in. So, we were having problems.
So let me show you what I will try to mark, which is the second photo B. And can you describe what's in that photo?
So the computers looking from into the store are on the right side, so we hung up uh posters that hang from the ceiling to block the windows, not the, you know, best, and you can see the now hiring is right when we moved in, and then there was a couple other clings, I I actually think Jeff or the old Water Wizards guys made it clear right before we got there.
Steve, can you advance your filter of the old pictures?
Still on picture A.
Oh. On my screen, I have this here.
This is what the public is seeing on this one, you see? It's the the first one, that's A.
The Water Wizards old. We'll try it again. About now.
There you go.
That, yeah.
Technology, so again, this is the.
So under the open signs, what you're seeing there are banners that we hung up in the inside to protect the computers, and obviously, we've just started, so we have now hiring signs in the window, and I I believe that the door clings may have been from Water Wizards right before we moved in.
And the national, the Water Wizards uh facade sign was changed to national.
Yeah, yes.
Let me show you what is uh photograph C. And I'm going to do this again, because I think I need to.
We're good.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Now, why did it do it that time, it's leaving it with the other.
It's too annoying.
Definitely prefer the puppet picture.
I can edit my image using A I. And is that uh photograph?
That's what's up there now, looking in to the left, our store hours are on the door, uh and yeah, we're doing ground pools above ground course, not on the left, left hand side of the store.
Tell the board about what that the, we're calling it a sign, it's actually a decal, what it consists of.
No, it it blocks like I would say sixty to seventy percent of the sunlight coming into the thing, you can still see in when you approach the building, um but yeah, it's like you can see inside, but looking at the, you know, you can't say so. Like, when you get close, you can see through that, and we, you know, it just protects us from the sun, and the equipment getting sun damage and stuff of that nature.
And let me show you what's been marked D of A three, is that the door?
Yeah, that's the door, sort of holds open, so we can get hot tubs in and out of there, and to the right where the spas are, that's where our computers are. Um, that's true. Or visual, the the left and right door, you can definitely see inward, that it better be what's going to be.
And then let's look at E.
And that's the 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 clings, I guess, you know, that would protect the uh the computers over there.
Um, this is the extent of the signage that um is on site and what you're proposing, Chris?
Yeah.
We're not asking for anything different than what is depicted on A three and in uh photographs C and E, correct?
Correct, yeah, what is up there is what we would would like to keep this.
Um, the reason we are before this board is because you had issued a notice of violation, correct?
Correct.
And once we got the notice of violation, you retained me to file this application, proceed to relieve, correct?
Yeah.
Um, why, why do you, um, what type of um feedback have you gotten from the public with respect to your sign?
I mean, everybody that came in when it came up loved it, they really did, they liked, I mean, even the, I think it was A, the picture where we were hanging, I didn't, as a manager, didn't like that, and I had to protect the computers, I thought it was not very professional looking, like, just everybody that comes in is really, I know, only good feedback, they said it looks awesome, and people asked us who did it, you know, and stuff of that nature, and, you know, we've got a lot of good feedback on it.
Um, you mentioned that if you're, get close, you can actually see in through the decal.
Right, you can see in there, which is nice, you know, because we're by Aldo, they got robbed a bunch of times, so if anybody ever comes there, they can see if there's a problem inside or something like that, but that, you know, I'm asking for that, but I mean, you never know. But yeah, you can see in, and we can see out, you know, if you're standing there, somebody's knocking on the door for, for some reason.
Um.
And it helps, because we, there's a lot of Asian people that are walking around, we have homeless people back behind us over there. The one guy likes to pound on the door, so we know not to open the door early.
So comparing what the site looked like when you took uh which is reflected in B.
Right, that's when we first looked at it, yes.
Um. I assume that you prefer what has been.
I forgot how.
Constructed.
Yeah, I'm kind of picky about the way the store looks, I'm, I don't make back and notes, not really, really about that, but the original, how do you have to do it, but yes, I do have to do it. Right.
Um, is it your effort to try to modernize the the space in order to make it much more attractive to the public?
Yeah, I mean, we saw some high end items, I wanted to look like high end items are sold there, and so it's like again, the last minute, and, you know, not thought about, so definitely.
I told the question that I have first.
Okay. Um, I want, um, professionals have any questions for this one last one?
I'm saving my argument, but I'm, I have Stephen use a test.
Well, uh, let me just ask, you know, I had included uh some information about the size of the signs in my report, and a lot of that was taken from from the application, I just, is there anything that you disagree with in there?
Don't disagree with the the uh the calculations on the signage, it's actually probably, I don't think your calculations took into effect the door signage to be quite upfront.
So it's a little bit more?
So it's actually a little bit more, because the door signage includes it, and um quite honestly, folks, this this is one where we recognize that we need a lot of variances, but we think that this, because of the unique wall of windows on this space, um that this is a much more, much more attractive thing than what would be permitted, which is a six foot, six square foot sign.
Just wanted to ask, did you consider installing a shade or blinds on the windows?
We tried a lot, a bunch of stuff like that, yeah, but the only problem with the shades is then people like like to look in if they're walking by, because we have a, you know, our neighbor does a lot of business, so people have walked by helps business, and they can see it, and they go, there's hot tubs there, and we didn't look at them. So, uh, we, yes, we considered a bunch of different things, we.
If if you use the shades, that would first uh.
They would be, they would be shut most of the time up there.
And it would completely block anybody from a security standpoint from being able to see in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because they would have, I mean, even now, in winter, right now, it's crazy how bright it is up there, even with the the clings, but definitely better.
And you said you can see through the uh the window signs, like the pictures, but do you have to be, do you have to be like right there, I I didn't actually, I didn't.
I I would say, uh, uh, to be honest, like a couple of feet, like two, three feet, when you're approaching it, you can see it, you know, you can see movement, stuff like that. But yeah, to really get visually, you probably want to be up instead a little bit closer, but.
Once again, any other question?
Okay.
The only question I would have is, um, I think we should put some sort of calculation in there, I don't know how, even if we talk about how it's calculated, I think we should put something.
Want me to review the variances?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I'm just saying, I think we should put that in there, the other two, I don't, I I think we're okay with, but if we're talking about square footage.
We can provide that calculation for you, actually, I think part of the application, we could probably do it now, and just add those on there.
Let me, let me just list, just for the record, what we're, what the variance relief.
Beth, could you use the mic, they're not gonna be able to hear you.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was, I was saying, let me list the variance relief, and I think Steve is going to add some additional detail. Yes, um, so for sign quantity, there are two window or decal signs that are permitted, but uh there are at least eight proposed, and I I don't think that accounts for the individual signs on the door. Um, additionally, there's relief needed for the total sign area, a total area of six square feet is permitted. The applicant had indicated about a hundred and, a hundred and forty two point five square feet was proposed, and I think. Square feet was proposed, and I think there is additional. Uh, area that is on the doors that includes at a minimum the business name and hours and some other information. Um. And I I think the total glass area that was covered was seventy-one percent. Uh, but I would look to the applicant's attorney to indicate if there's additional area on the door that needs to be accounted for, so that may increase above. Uh, seventy-one percent. And then lastly.
What's what's permitting the coverage? Six.
Yeah, six square feet, but the percentage of coverage.
There is no.
They, the applicant had indicated it's seventy-one percent, but that's not a, it's not a compliance item. It's just additional information. Seventy-one percent of the glass area, windows and doors, but it's a, their regulation is a maximum of six square feet. Um, and then the last item, the Borough Regulation Purpose, and states that uh, signs on windows and doors shall name the street. The name and the number of types of businesses or some combination thereof. Here we've got. Signage that goes beyond that and lists products and lists some pictures as well. So that's the, that's the relief that's being requested, but. If Mr. Grunberg has some additions to that. Uh, we should have that as well.
Yeah, I think the the three doors in the front, if you take a look at it, that's probably. These, the middle door is an additional. Well, so I didn't have to do that.
Now, what we will do also, I'll recommend that I'll attach as an exhibit. These so that we can clearly see what was, you know, allowed to, we've got that as well. Um, and what was approved by the board.
Is it easier to say what isn't covered right now?
Well, I think.
I I I mean, when, can I just ask to clarify Beth's comment about the eight? Are proposed, how are we counting the eight? Are we doing the individual like? So on picture C, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven windows shown. And they're all covered.
Yeah, so I was saying.
Door, but then is that what we're doing in per sign for win window?
Yeah, because the window signs were the entire window, uh, the entire window itself. And so I, it wasn't breaking up the uh. There's really no way to differentiate.
But if we do it that way, we're effective, isn't it? Plus four on the other side, so that's. Twelve, one, six, plus four, which is ten. Then the panel of the door and then. Other three panels above the door, but all covered too. We've got the open sign, but they're covered by some image of. Water, they're covered too, right? The only ones that aren't completely covered are the ones that say the doors that say national pools, but the ones that say spa service, am I correct? The rest is covered with a decal.
Let's look at, if we look at the first drawing on A. A three, A or B. That shows how many are available. So you've got basically like eight. Full panels.
You know, I I would actually argue that. You know, that might actually just be one whole sign on the left, because even though they're little panels, it's all depicting one. Sign and on the right, all one sign too.
But that would be my question regarding the variance sought. Hold on, I need. Karen, anything better? I think there, there is no other way to calculate this other than per window. That's the way we do our ordinance. It doesn't matter, because if we grant this variance. Theoretically, this applicant could choose to paint the windows black. Because you're.
We could certainly.
Well, that's what I mean, but I'm, that's why I need to know, because when we do this, when we. When, when we wrote these ordinances, it was, uh, well, boring questions. So my, my question is, regardless of how many windows you cover. What is the longevity of the material? Typically, a vinyl transfer like this will not last the life of your lease. So do you know how long this will last?
Well, the young, I asked the young man who was putting it up, and he says about ten years, but that's not counting fading. That's when most people change it out. He was like, you, most people change it about every ten years or so. I'm sure it fades at that. But I haven't really noticed anything faded. It still looks pretty decent to me. I mean, I I have. In a phase where I've been unhappy with it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we would agree to a condition that. This would be what the board would be approving.
Yeah.
And that if there was any change to that, we would have to come back before the board.
Uh, I don't, I see what we will change anyway, really.
And folks, I I'm not sure it's critical for the consideration, but just in terms of the counting. Um, just to clarify, so they have. Variety of windows where there's a a. A larger window at sort of midway and then a smaller, almost like a clear story window at the top. And so I was counting. Look, admittedly, I think there are a variety of ways that the number of signs could be counted. But what I did is for this, for the sake of the record. Is I look at the picture that was submitted with the application, which is a little bit different than what than was here. But I took each column of windows, so the clear story plus the the lower larger window, there's three on the left. And then two clear story windows on either side of the. Open sign.
Yes.
And then two columns of windows to the right of that. So that's a total of um. Of eight windows there, plus they have an additional. Uh, window on the. Uh, or excuse me, additional sign on the door as well that was shown. It seems like we have some additional.
Would it, is it, um? Isn't really the the driver one always the squa- biggest square footage in this place, really?
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, it, to be honest, the, all of the photos or all of the signs on the left, i- it's essentially one contiguous contiguous image that's stretched or placed across six individual window panes. So I agree, the, I think the, the more. Relevant. Relief that the board should consider is the area of the window sign rather than just one sign versus.
Right, and our, um, our ordinance is for a total of six square feet per. Building.
Yeah.
No, six square feet per window.
Yeah, correct.
Right, just wanted to clarify that.
And I, and I I do think, you know, not trying to make it more difficult, I do think we should, you know, obviously have to look at both, because we can have a window. Sign requirement. Um, and uh, I I I would say, just to be safe, we should look at. Each window is having a sign, even if one sign spans three windows. Let's just. Review and and grant it. Even if it's in excess of what we have to, because. You know, this, the way, the way we read this is each window can have a sign. So that's, you know, two window signs. So if we say one sign on one window, even though it's. A sign spanning a number of windows, I I think it's safer. You know, to be conservative, I guess.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Even though it may be three.
Not to speak to the board, but I think their concerns might come differently than than that. Is that nuanced, we're saying. Um. Okay, so for this witness. Is that all your questions for this? So I can ask, um. Board members, um, with questions for this witness. I see Jeff, Jonathan already has his hand up. I can go first.
Thanks, um, so just a couple of questions. Um, my understanding is that National Pools is a chain. Are there, there are other stores?
It's a family owned business. There are four other stores, yes.
Do the. Okay, so do the other stores have a similar setup out front?
Uh, one of them does, uh, two of them do not.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent sure. But I know one definitely doesn't. I'm unsure on one, but the other one done.
If you were picking a location, I know that this was a a previous, um. Uh, business in the same industry, but if you were picking a. A location, would it have been, if you were building something from scratch, would you have picked a location? That would have allowed you to have this kind of signage on the facade of the building? Um, I understand you're trying to provide some shade for computers and equipment in there, but. Do your other stores have less glazing on the facade so that there's less of an issue of damage to stuff on the inside?
Yeah, I don't know what every store does. Uh, I can say the Hillsborough store, which I manage, we had to ha- hang posters up inside. They didn't do this in there. And put their position where that building is, doesn't get the foot traffic and, you know. Damn, but I can't speak for what the owners would do, would do there. I would prefer every store looks like that. I think it looks great, but that's just me.
Right.
Um. Yeah, one, just one other, one other question. Um. Actually, no, it's actually, it's a question for 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 Beth or Karen. I'll, I'll hold it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Okay, uh, the question I would have is that, uh, the. The graphics, they're on the inside of the window, on the inside of the store?
No, they're, uh, they're on the outside.
They're on the outside, because. Some of the colors go right across the columns as they come down through, so it's just trying to see whether that's part of the.
They put that on the column, yes. Just to continue the picture from a distance, it looks, I'm I'm assuming that's why.
All right, um, online Hannah, do you have anything? For this witness? No, okay.
No, I don't think you though.
Okay, Brian?
No, no questions.
Mike?
I'm good.
Well, so we got, I can only see those ones on my screen. Um, Adrian?
I, I have nothing. No questions.
Thank you. Dom?
Yeah, no questions.
Dennis?
None from me, thanks.
Okay. Do you want to go as well? You got any more questions?
Yeah.
Oh, I have a couple of questions, sorry. And you. In your testimony, you mentioned, um, the neighbor. You mentioned specifically what the neighbor, um, had done. Does the neighbor have similar decals on their windows?
I don't, I don't believe so. His equipment's in the back of the building.
Presumably, they have the same issue with sun.
Right, their computers in the back of them. Like, they use the back of the.
That's how they chose to deal with the challenge. Okay, um, then, um. The main sign that's above your window, the what the National Pool in item B, the. Big blue sign. Um, did you go before, did you submit that through the signage committee at all? For that, do you have the application for that? Would you do that?
Do not, but I assume that that they did, but I do not, the owners, I.
Okay, do we know if we have anything? I don't remember seeing anything.
Through the signage committees, they would not be here. Right, because they would have gotten approval.
I know that's what I'm asking. Did they get approval for that part?
I can only. Well, that was done like. Six months, seven months per week. This didn't, we didn't put that up immediately.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that, yes, they got permits, because there's that on the building and we, there's one on the.
Okay.
Up front for something like that.
So.
That's within the same footprint as the.
I actually think we, yeah, just changed the panel.
Get that question on it. Yeah, that that's within the same footprint as what was there before the Water Wizard Pool and Spa.
Yeah, I think they changed just the interior panel.
Sure. No, I'm just wondering if it would go through the committee, then. That then gives you an inkling of what the requirement, are the allowable signage requirements were at that point? Um. The previous one that you referenced, and then a similar question in three A. Um, I presume you're. You should propose saying that this is what is there and therefore. Um. It's a similar amount of signage. Is that what you're, this kind of statement you're making with this?
I just think we were just showing. How it's just visually nicer now, it's.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
No, it wasn't. What they, what they did, it's just a better look of the story.
Right, because then my question would be, did they have, um, approval for that? We don't have anything formally of approval for that. On the record, you haven't got any testimony about that then?
We're just showing what it looked like at the time that they took the space and how this is a much nicer view for the store.
Okay, um, the decal as well as being a decal, um. Kind of, to me. Would you consider it more of an advertising billboard situation?
It, it's not a billboard, um, in the legal aspect of it. Um, I think it serves a couple of purposes. It's, it's kind of a unique type of signage, because it is the decal. Um, and it, it actually, it serves the purpose of advertising. But it also serves the purpose of providing a, a, a good visual, an attractive visual.
Hmm.
Um, it's not just words, it's a, it's a. Sometimes a picture says a, a, uh, what's it? Picture paints a, is where the south one works.
Yeah.
Um, if somebody sees a, a very attractive scene. On a, on a. On the windows, then it it's appealing.
Hmm.
So it it serves both the purpose of providing an aesthetic. And, uh, advertising, uh, but it's not a billboard. Because a billboard is a promotion of a, a separate use on a different piece of property.
Hmm, yeah, I was just saying, it's, it's a large advertising, large, because it's two hundred square feet. Um, you know, I was also thinking we don't allow billboards, so.
Yeah, I I appreciate that. I would, I would, I would urge the board to look at this as, as a onsite sign. As a billboard, because it's not onsite. I I appreciate the comparison to the size, but it really is for onsite.
Okay, thanks for that quite mention.
Yeah, billboard puts into all use issues, which is.
Right, and that's what I wanted to make sure that we, um, covered the right things in this and not missed something I wanted to think about. Um, okay, so you, Todd, you got any other questions on this one?
I did have one question that just came up. So if your testimony that on, on the submission for B, which was. Replace National Pools and Spa on the upper sign, the internal internally illuminated sign. And beneath that. You hung a series of posters, I think you called them now hiring, open, I see some. Other signs, they're just hung from the ceiling.
Basically, yes, sometimes.
So but as, but your, your testimony was that that is a way that you can combat. The computer issue, which really shouldn't come into play with signage, but, but you could hang signs from the window in a various form like you did in item B.
What we, yeah, we could.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you.
I see where you're going with like. You could extend that to a more permanent situation as opposed to the. Right, it's almost like a rack, isn't it? Like racks along for longer, yeah, okay. All right, so I think that's questions from everybody for this witness. I think, yeah, I was just gonna check. Right, so, um, I think, do we have any members of the pub, or are there any members of the public that have questions for this witness on this matter?
I have no attendings.
We've got no attendings.
So stop sharing.
Anybody in there?
Yes.
Public, can you have comment? No question, comment, no. Okay, have another witness?
I do not, but my spiel.
Okay.
Is that, um, we think that this is a C two variance. That, um, we, um, are providing a better zoning alternative by advancing purpose I, which is a, a, uh. An appropriate visual and aesthetic improvement to what could be there. And that this is a unique way of dealing with that situation. And because it's such a unique piece of property and a unique. Um, proposal with the trans semi-transparent signage. Um, we, we think it addresses those concerns that were raised in, in. Um, Ms. McNadis is reporting that there wouldn't be a substantial detriment to public good. Or a substantial impairment to his own planning, zoning ordinance, that this is better. If the board has any questions or concerns about it, we'd like the opportunity to talk to you about it. Um, but that's. Where I think we fall under a C two variance.
Okay. So now we'll go to our professionals and comment on that then.
Um, so I think, I think that the board needs to, uh. And in consideration of the C variances, I think you need to consider first, um, for the C two bearing, the questions are obviously what purposes municipal land use law. Uh, are advanced through the application that, uh, the applicants indicated that they see purpose I, desirable visual impact of the. One of the, one of the, or perhaps the primary purpose. Um, is part of considering how the purpose municipal land use law. For which of these would be applicable, the board should also consider how that. How that is, uh, applicable to this specific piece of property. We want to be able to differentiate. Uh, this site compared to other properties within the H R district in order to grant the C two variance. Uh, as part of the positive criteria, but the negative criteria, the board should consider. Uh, two things, whether there's substantial detriment to the public good. And I think since we're talking about signage. That's really gonna relate to how does, how does the signage look, you know, is the, is there detriment as a result of the changed appearance? Is there benefit as opposed a- as a result of the change appearance of the building? Um, and also relevant to the public good, I would also encourage the board to think about any security issues, because that's one of the reasons why. Uh, window signs are typically limited in municipal zoning ordinances. The second part of the negative criteria is whether there's any substantial detriment to the zone plan. It, which is really asking, is there any substantial detriment? To the master plan or the zoning ordinance with the granting of the variance have, would it undermine? One or both of those documents in a substantial way. Here, because we're talking about something, you know, pretty limited topic, we're talking about sign, uh, window signs, not even all signage. But I think that the, the relevant consideration for this is, first, we talk about aesthetics in the master plan. There's, uh, there's language. There's, uh, there's language in there looking to promote, uh, quality commercial buildings, to promote businesses as well. But we also, uh, I would also urge the board to think about the intent of window sign regulations, which is aesthetics and security. And so for better or worse, I think the issues and the criteria for this application are really, uh, wrapped together in terms of how, what is the impact on the building appearance? And what is the impact on building security? And the board should consider whether you think that this is a positive, says a positive impact and improves the appearance of the building or, or negative impact and why, and the same thing for, uh, security concerns that have been discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Can I answer any questions?
Do you have any questions for, um, that, or she did on her statement? It could be summed up very thoroughly too.
No, but I'd make a motion to close the public hearing so further discussion.
Okay, right, no motion.
I'm sorry.
Second, thank you.
Let's just open it up just for the record to the public for any comments.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I don't think there was any, but just.
Yeah, there was not many, but yeah, just checking, have any, um, comments um, on this application, some members of the public online or in person?
Yeah, can, can you just define, do you say your name? Robin Creedes, Flemington Community Partnership, Flemington Improvement District. Can you define of the nature of a public comment at this point?
And what, Adam Bur, yeah, on this particular application? Yeah, so if positive, negative.
I would like to make public.
She's gonna need to use the mic.
You don't have to plug the mic in or pick one. It's gonna get really cozy over here.
Yeah, anybody who can, please, so wherever you look. Oh, that's not just, yeah.
So having, uh.
And, and.
It's my experience.
Yeah, so they can capture.
Sure. Yeah, you have to make sure you're in the video so we can see your beautiful face.
Hi, Shafaba Ravel. We'll just, we'll just hurry away and just in case you leave a testimony board, I'm sure the testimony you're about to give this board, if any, shoot the whole truth, nothing but truth.
I do. So having been a neighbor of, um, the pool store on Stangle Road for many, many years, you know, it was a very, uh, un, un-tenable to have stacks and stacks and sacks of chlorine in parking spots. And I know that driving around, looking at pool stores, I have a pool, so I go to them too. There's usually an abundance of furniture and, you know, umbrellas and chairs and sometimes spas and things like that. So, um, my comment is, I, I would, I understand that you're trying to advertise something that's really of a large size that some other towns allow you to put in front of, in parking spots and in front of your door. And that's really less attractive to me. Um, also, you know, we're looking at iconic buildings to represent our circle shopping district. So I drove around today and looked at lines of buildings to try to figure out what is, what is a building that looks iconic for the highway? And basically, it's just like your building storefront where it's buried, cookie cutter, you know, a peaked roof next to a line, then maybe a square, then, you know. So I think with the highway retail that we have, there are very few really iconic buildings. And I can understand the need or the desire to want to have more of an image, um, to convey to the public. I personally, because I come around that way and sit at, try, trying to make a right or a left, look at your building and think it looks brighter and a little bit more attractive. And your neighbor happens to have, you know, a hundred powersport things in front of their door. So I personally would rather have more signage and less, um, stuff. Uh, I don't know if that was, if that is a consideration of yours, that, you know, you can also put a hundred aderondact chairs and, and a spa. So I prefer it on the window than I do, uh, in front of the door. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, um, see if you have anything else.
No, I think the, the board can recognize, like Mr. Cook said, that they could be painted black or, you know, shades could be put up that completely blocks the sun, but then that blocks the safety concern. And this is a, a unique way of addressing safety concerns by still having it semi-transparent to be able to look into. While at the same time making something, as the witness just said, that's attractive. That actually brings people into Flemington to develop those con, the commerce that you want to do as part of your master plan. So I, I think we would agree to a condition that we discussed that this would be what you would approve. And if we deviate from that at all, we would have to come back with what the board.
Question?
Well, let's, um, oh.
No, just one, uh, few, uh, discussion, uh, was the fact that there are stores nearby that have got clutter all over the front of the store. It appears as if you're not planning on putting anything in front of the store. So you're not going to store materials outside?
Well, I put, I, to be honest with you, I roll a step out every morning and we have a blow up turkey now and then next bus I have a blow up Santa Claus. That's, that's really all I put out front.
Okay.
Now, now I don't like a whole lot of stuff anyway.
So what we see is what we get.
Yes.
Now I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Can I have a second for that, please?
Sorry.
Okay, we take the long, the closing of the public hearing, please, um. Um, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Fasara?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Ethan?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Ms. Whitespin?
Yes.
Mr. Samina?
Yes.
And Ms. Fingal?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the other board, we can do our question considerations.
Motion in a second.
Motion is either discussion first, it doesn't matter, right? So, but before, I, I mean, I'd like to comment since, uh, I've been on the sign review committee for, um, decade, and, um, so when we wrote this ordinance, we wrote it to avoid what this applicant is showing in item B with a bunch of signs all over the place, right? So in item B, where they have the now hiring posters, there is no ordinance that governs that. So an applicant can choose to hang any amount of posters they want in their windows, because it's not a sign, it's something hanging from the ceiling. It's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a loophole, but, you know, we cover signage, which is permanent signage affixed to a building. So, and we wrote it because in item B or, or document B, and for the board to reference, you know, hanging now hiring signs and other posters and black boards or whatever they want to hang or buckets of chlorine, that could be the way this, that this applicant, um, combats their issue of both sunlight and trying to clean up, I put that in air quotes, their storefront. When you think of our highway retail, um, or cir, circle, you know, this, this circle area, covering windows is much more common than not covering windows. And I know that we don't set precedence by any decision that we make, but off the top of my head, I could count seven that have completely covered their windows. Um, and you wouldn't recognize them, I'm not going to say who they are, but they're out there. They're out there with, sometimes it's just a gray covering and it looks very natural. And other times it's, um, just imagery. So I think for this applicant to come in front, who's doing the right thing by saying, hey, guys, I want to do something that is somewhat radical. I want to use seventy-one percent of, I want to cover a hundred percent of my windows. By coming in, they're asking us for our opinion on, instead of hanging a plethora of signs and posters and buckets of flooring, can I just make this cleaner? I don't think there's any doubt when you drive by, I drove by this, looking at this side of the road. Um, it's very clean. This specific building is very clean, you know exactly what it is, and it's highway retail. We don't set precedence by decisions that we make. Every applicant is different, um. I would not agree with this on Main Street. We also have buildings on Main Street that have covered one hundred percent of their windows. But again, looking at this, it's not foot traffic. You can still see in, at night, by the way, it, you can tell the store is open, it's illuminated because it is translucent, it's that bus wrap with little holes in it. So while we were adamant when we wrote the ordinance to not cover your windows, so when people walk by, they can see in. Nobody's walking by. I know they said they have people walk, you don't walk by this location. This is a drive-by location, similar to other things on the circle, which shall remain nameless that have covered their windows. Um, so again, I, I don't necessarily like it for every building in town. I don't like it on Main Street where we have foot traffic. But based on the fact that we have not heard from any of their other neighbors that have done this already and have, have done this for probably ten years now, um, and, you know, I think it's, it's an interesting concept. It is, it is big, bold. It may have others come out to say, I want to get approval for my windows. But I think that's when you have to look at it. That's why I was really saying, it needs to look like this. Because if they stop doing above ground pools and they scrape that off and now put whatever the next thing is, they would have to come back to us. So that's why I wanted to make sure that this was exactly what we were going to see every day when we drive by. And if in-ground pools fall out of fashion, they don't scrape it off and say, we sell barbecues now. Because that could get messy, similar to how, you know, I, I always call these signs, the shop, like shop break signs. Not that we have them at shop break, but you know, the big giant signs that say grapes seventy-nine cents, that's a poster. And they can plaster them across their windows because it's a poster. Our ordinances don't cover posters. But they look messier. Our ordinances cover signage, which is a tendency to look cleaner. So I was just trying to get background to the board, because if you're reading our ordinance, it clearly says, don't do this.
Hmm, so it clearly says, don't do this.
It clearly said that's why they made the variance.
And we only reviewed that signage ordinance a few years ago. Because I remember sitting doing the work, we did hours of work, and nobody ever raised that we should allow this. Nobody, we never raised, it was never discussed to cover it completely.
Right.
And it's, you call it clean, like, it's full of pictures. It's, it's, it's not clean, clean. And I, I don't know, I'm, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, I'm concerned because we didn't think, we didn't, nobody mentioned doing this, because this was not what, what we intended. Even in this zone, it's not like there was discussion to say, well, in this zone, we should allow this because it's a different kind of feel, not Main Street. That's, we do, the, the, the ordinance allows for different
Right.
situations in different locations, in our different zones. And we never considered that, and never considered allowing this.
No, we typically have looked at them from, again, nothing sets precedence, but, um, even when we had, uh, Rite Aid who wanted to cover their windows. We allowed them to cover the windows, doesn't set precedence, Rite Aid is no longer there. But, um, you know, be, to be able to cover some of their windows and to make it look cleaner versus what it could look like, which is fully within our ordinance to do what item, what page B is. Page B, they can put now hiring signs, they can hang ten of them. Because it's a poster from the window. So that's where I struggle to say.
Right, but then, so you, because you feel they can do that and that's worse, you want to let them do something that we expressly prohibit. Okay, um, Jeff, I see your hand up over there. What, you've been like crazy?
Thank you, um, so I hear everything Todd just said, um, but I have a real problem, I really do. And let me, and you know, like, and I've been in the store, like, you know, I, I know the store, I know the, I think we've all been down that block on Ravel, you know, the number of times, um. This property is not unique in the H R. In fact, this property is pretty vanilla co, cookie cutter of a highway retail kind of structure. And so I, I, I've, I, I don't know if we're meeting the positive criteria, uh, first and foremost of, of granting relief. I, I think there's a, there's a problem with, with, with that, the way that Beth laid it out. I think that the security issues are real, um, because we've, we know that the property next door has had a num, and, and, and a, not, not just a property next door, but a property not too far away has had issues of theft, um, you know, of, of, of devices, stuff that's left outside. I know that the rear of this property does have to have certain materials outside. Um, you know, bag, you know, big things of sand and, and, you know, other stuff that's kind of loading through that back door that's not necessarily seen from the street. Todd's correct that this is not a vehic, this is not, is a more vehicular, um, approach to it for sure. Um, but, you know, the aesthetics, it's, I, you know, we're, we're basically saying we can wrap a building seventy odd percent of the windows with advertisement. I mean, that's what this is. It's not, it's not talking about, um, uh, um, you know, sale on grapes, right? But, nor is it saying we're hiring, but like, I don't think anyone has any doubt of what products are being sold at this store. Right? You know, it's, 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 that's not a, it's, it, we're talking about a permanent wrap that is intended to block out light. It is very much not in the, you know, I, it certainly doesn't belong in Main Street, but like, if we're trying to make it a visual distinction, even in the highway retail district between stores that are in the borough and stores that are in the township, where anything goes in terms of signage, um, and we're trying to distinguish that this is the borough and this, and, but whereas opposed to what's not in the borough. We went through great lengths when the shops of Flemington came in about signage and how things were covered. We have, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm really reluctant to say that the burdens have been met here in terms of, you know, satisfying the negative criteria around aesthetics and security. Um, and I'm also really concerned that we have not met the burden of saying that the particular nature of this property in the H R district, as Beth said, would necessitate the relief that's being sought. Like, this is just a regular old, there's nothing about this pro, there's nothing about the size of the lot, there's nothing about the structure of the building, there's not, there's nothing about this box with glass that is distinguishing it from any number of other buildings in the H R zone. Right? It's not like there's any sort of unique characteristics that have been provided testimony on that would make me feel like we've got to grant relief here. Um, I was asking questions around the kind of nature of how pool shops operate, um, just to try to, to get something that would give me something here. I, I'm, I've got real concerns about granting relief here, even in the highway retail district about, we're gonna end up going down a very quick road of visual clutter and wrapping everything all the time everywhere, um, in a way that I think aesthetically doesn't comport with what we, the, the aesthetics that we've seen in other places in the borough. Especially since there are testimonies that it's going to stay the same for ten years possibly, like, think about advertisements that have changed over time, the, the, I can't ima, you know, I can imagine in five years, I was looking at this and saying, it, it just looks dated, you know, and I, I just, I, I have a lot of concerns. So that, that's just, that's my, that's my piece.
Yeah, Jeff, I just want, I've written down here, um, when Beth was talking that it's, it ties into the, the detriment to public good, the detriment to the public good aspect that you said we had to consider. Right, Jeff, with the look and the security, it ties into both of those effectively.
I, I, again, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I, I just, I understand what they're trying to do and I agree that, that it looks better in some ways now than it had before. Um, that was a conforming sign as opposed to non, or not conforming with non-signs as opposed to, I just, I, this is, this is, for me, there's not been testimony to suggest that this is, there is something particular about the nature of the business or the peculiarity of the property. Um, angle of the sun doesn't do it for me, I'm sorry, and computers needing shade, I'm sorry, that's not adequate to go from six feet to hundred and seventy square feet of signage.
Yeah, the, there's, um, it's not like it's the only solution to the problem that they were having. That was what was going through my mind.
Right, they can.
There, there are alternate ways to solve the issues.
They could choose to paint the windows black.
They could choo.
That is not, that is not.
Or, or they could choose to put blinds up, or they could choose the location of things inside. There were, there were multiple ways to resolve the issues that they've used as their personal detriment. Which, does that over, overarch our detriment to the public good that we're supposed to consider also? That's what I'm trying to wrestle with right now.
You also could have very large posters hanging behind the glass, because our ordinances don't cover posters behind the glass, not affixed to the glass, but hanging behind. So you could choose to have large imagery on some kind of curtain, if you will, um.
Hmm, well, yeah, it's not our job to tell them things that are unrelated to this signage request and this sign variant for signage specifically. Um, to keep our thoughts to the signage request. Um, okay, um, I want to throw out, anybody else online have comment, I don't see, oh, yes, I do see.
I do, I do. Um, so Todd mentioned it, I.
I do, I do, um, so Todd mentioned it, I just want Cara to just confirm that. If we approve this, it's not setting a precedent?
Every application must be reviewed on its own merit. Um, and. The conditions and the circumstances and the evidence presented in connection with this application is what the board is making its decision on. Um, can another applicant come and try and liken themselves to this applicant? Yes. Um, but every single decision this board makes is specific to the application, the applicant, the property, and the presentation to the board.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, I agree with a lot of what Todd said. I think that, you know, some of the options they could have done would have looked a lot worse. Um, I think it looks attractive, and if, if it was approved and they had to come back for any change. I think that's, that's acceptable to me, that they'd have to come back. Um, but some of the other options they could do. Um, and also the sun, I do factor that in, but some of the options they could do would look a lot worse and they'd be allowed. That's my input.
Thanks. Hannah, you have anything?
Um, I agree with both what Dennis and Todd have been saying, but I also kind of hear, um, what, you know, what Karen and, um. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm blanking out right now, I need more coffee, and Jeffrey are saying, um, and that. The aesthetic is potentially concerning, but I do agree that the application of what, like, the actual sign, what, what is being applied is a lot cleaner than versus, you know, having the interior posters. Things like that. I do think it's. It is cleaner, um. But just the concern of like the aesthetics and the longevity of the aesthetics, again, like, you know, in five years, are we gonna look at this and be, oh, is this dated? But at the same time, I think. You know. The other options aren't necessarily better, potentially, um, but yeah, that's, that's my thought process at this point.
Okay, thanks, Hannah. Um, I'm gonna cross my list as you hit done. Do you have anything?
No, I don't at this time.
Okay, thank you. Melissa?
There, I'm sorry, um, I hear what everybody's saying, you know, versus size versus aesthetics versus other options. And I think. You know, the fact that this is its own application on its own merit, it's not setting a precedent. Is something to keep in mind. Hey. Other than that, I don't have any comments.
Okay, thanks. Brian?
Uh, no issues, as long as, you know, no precedent is set, you know, I'm happy to, you know, say okay to it.
Mike?
Ready to vote.
All right, okay, because he's ready to vote. Oh, I'm just wanting to ask everybody, Mike, um, Adrian, you got anything?
No, thank you, I'm fine, and I've, I, I, I think this, my, my greatest concern is really the security issues. Around that site, that would be my, my only concern, and that's for the gentleman sitting there more than anyone else. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jim? Did you say?
Well, I, I think I'm trying to look at it kind of the way Todd is. I mean, you look at what's there now, you look at the windows that are there now, and you got thirty-two different types of signs that are. In the window that are a lot. Makes it look like a mess.
Well, that's not the only option, though.
Okay, I believe so. All right, but can you make them change them to something you like? No.
Well, hmm, yes, we, we have, we can consider for the public good aesthetic, the look.
Right, no, I'm just, yeah, what I'm saying is, is that. Uh, uh, the, the idea, the idea of the. Um, covering the windows, uh. Shows a modernization ability to think of something that would actually continue to. Excuse me, um, advertise, and it doesn't take up space in the front, doesn't take up space in the back. Uh, it's, it's a tough one because the way the windows are right now and what they could do or could do over the next. Five years to try to upgrade it, um, it's gonna be difficult for them, from what I can see. Uh, so, uh, I. Kind of like the look of what they want to do, and as long as it doesn't become precedent for anything else in the areas we've indicated. Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, I can, I, I just, just, just to, to be clear, because we did write these ordinances, and Karen is absolutely right, like. We really did consider this at the time, and we said, yeah, we don't like it. We don't like when people cover the windows, we just don't like it, and. It's been sneaking in, especially in highway retail, um. I'll only speak within the borough, because like Jeff said, in Marin Township, um, so, some of the, some of the signs are one hundred percent covered on their windows. Uh, and you don't even realize that they're windows because they're all like either white or black. Um, and, and I, I, I just want to go, I don't like it per se. In, in aggregate, but I think that from a highway retail, when I drove by this to look at it before the application. The, hmm, you use the word modern, Jim. I, I could go, I could get there, that is, it's more modern than hanging posters in the window. Um, but what I do like is the process of talking through it. And the merits of each business, because we do have businesses out there that have done exactly like this, and they've been like that for. Years, so maybe our building inspector will get around, or zoning officer will get around and start flagging them for us. So we can have the same discussion, say it works here, it doesn't work there, doesn't work on Main Street, does work on highway. And I think it's that exchange that I tend to favor when an applicant comes in and says. I have an issue, I need your approval, can you help me out here? So, I just wanted to, I, I didn't want to be.
And then get what you're saying, that you're, you're, you're right in terms of the, the, I have to say, I have an issue and this is unique. Um, this is why I need to do this, this is unique, this is the point that Beth made, that we have to consider that, that this is a. Unique site to do that, but is it that unique? Is it, is this, is this the unique? Solution to the problem that we expressly said we didn't want to use, that's my query. That's what's going through my mind that we, and I understand what you're saying when you say that we can. Look at each case in merits, but. One thing I consider when, if we consider that option is that then. People, right now, our sign on was really clear, and they didn't come before us to, they didn't come before us for an application for these signs, these were, this was found to be incorrect, so they didn't go to our process.
Correct.
Um, it was found by our office, our construction officer, zoning officer, that it was. Noncompliant. If, yes, everybody's allowed to come and say that they have a specific variance request. But isn't it cleaner to tell everybody, this is what, this is our regulations, and this is what we want, and this is what you will go by? If we say that, um, if we allow variance, we have to be really careful, I think, with the variance, um, that Beth told us we have to consider. To make sure that this truly. Meets those requirements. In order to. Accept it. To give the variance, you know, you understand? Acceptance, bless you, thank you, the acceptance of that public good. And also, the best point, and the acceptance to our zone plan, effectively, this is, this is our ordinance. Um, do we want to give, I know every case can go on, it's merit, but we've certainly used this before to deny people. Um, less signage, the less percentage increase over the six square feet. To go from two, six square feet to two hundred square feet, that's, it's not a little increase, right? It's a massive. Variance request. To my mind as well, that's, that's my, that's my thought on it. And Hannah has another comment now.
My. Thought on this is that would we be more amenable if it was, if the images shown on it were less. Product and advertisement and more like in your own personal realm appeasing? Would that affect your, our decision-making in that either too? That's just kind of my thinking as well in this.
Right, you mean, there's something a bit more like. Make it almost look.
Like, less, yeah, i- if, if that were the situation, like, would we be more amenable to it in that, like, if it was less of like. That, that, that product placement?
Each of the board members can think on that, whether they would be or would not. Um, I know for me, the driving factor is the, the. The, the sheer amount that it covers rather than what it looks like. It's that it looks like that because it's covering the whole thing, that's my personal, but what other board members think, I don't know. But that is a reasonable thought to be having, Hannah, and considering for sure. All right.
I think, well, I, I'll throw one more thing in there, what if you, what if you. What if they were to take what they're proposing right now and just make it on the inside rather than the outside?
You mean bad virtue of what Todd was saying, don't they?
I mean, if they, if in fact, if we.
Still covers the window, though, you mean it would still cover the window, but still. Apply it inside?
It would be inside.
You can't apply it to the window.
It wouldn't, no, you wouldn't apply it to the window, it would have to be something that was, you know.
It's like hanging on a shade or something like that.
Yeah. Would it be, would it, would we still have to approve it if it is hanging?
If they used a curtain behind, we wouldn't be able to comment on that either, that's their choice for the curtain behind.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry about that, because that is an alternative for doing it outside.
Right.
That is somewhat of a, I call it a loophole, but at the same time, it is not, it's, that has not been done. In, in the borough, it's been done in many other municipalities, um, that I've seen before from a retail perspective, but within the borough. This seems to be the, um. The preferred methodology.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and I think, and, and again. Yet, I know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, right? So, um, drive-by location, um, I, I. Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough.
And, and for me as well, the fact that the neighbor hasn't needed to do this for the same exact issues that they claim, for the hardship that they claim in terms of the. He, I don't know, is what I'm saying? That's affected to me also, from the, from the test.
Well, they have their, you can hear the place, not that it closes the window.
Exactly, that's what I mean is, given it because it's unique to this location, it's not, it's, it's the same situation next door, and they haven't had to choose this. I'm saying they didn't access the variance of this, that's, that's meant to my mind too. Um, okay, well, if anybody, has anybody else, I'll just call last call for. Comment, questions and comments then, or discussion from the board. Now, do we, we, do we have a motion? We don't have a motion on the table, so we need a motion to either. Grant the variance or not grant the variance, so somebody needs to decide that.
So would be the variances, just, just to clarify, would be the variances that that identifies.
Mm-hmm.
Um, based upon the exhibits that were submitted. Um, should there be a motion to approve the application? Um, some of the conditions that I'm hearing, uh, that the applicants agreed to. Uh, are to attach photographs as an exhibit, is to be exactly what is being approved, and any deviations whatsoever would go back to the board. Um, again, with the understanding that they could put this on the inside if they did not constitute signage. Um. I did have here to submit evidence of the sign permit for the wall sign or some sort of information, I'm sure that that did go through the proper procedure, but. Just to kind of close the loophole on that. Um, and. Painting of the windows they could do as well, I had that as a condition, no painting, but that's something that they could certainly do. Um, so those are really the two conditions.
I just, I don't think, but did we put that as a condition?
No, when you say, when you say, paint the windows. I, I, I'm, I should rephrase, you could tint the windows. We do not have an, you know, there is no ordinance against tinting windows, you know, because we've had applicants come in and ask to. Take the tinting off the windows, it's like, it, it, each, each case is so unique.
Yeah, I, I was, I was looking at that condition, but, you know.
There was, there was.
Body ordinance.
Yeah, I, I mean, because I'm not sure, no, no, I'm not.
That's a possibility.
I think the old-fashioned days of painting the windows like some folks do on Main Street, one hundred percent of the windows, that, again. That is just a different version of a, a digital graphic that goes on a window. When somebody paints it from the inside, or the outside.
Um, if, if there's an improving resolution, I would also ask that we just get an updated. Uh, area from Mr. Conover, it sounds like mine, uh, memo had overlooked some of the window or the door signage. Uh, I appreciate that we're gonna attach the pictures too, but if we can get just a little closer to the final number, I'd definitely.
So the approval would be based upon these.
Yeah, or maybe it's less a condition, I, I'll defer to you, but I don't know whether it's a condition or just information we would need from the applicant.
Correct.
To put any of those questions in, that's right, I think that's a good idea. Okay, so, um, I need somebody to move on second that place then. Are we, who, who, what, who Karen said?
I move the motion, the motion. The motion would be as they're asking for the conditions.
Correct.
So, good one. So a yes vote would be to approve, a no vote would be to not grant the variance.
Correct, so Jim might have a motion, but I need a second.
I'll second.
So, Melissa?
Melissa.
Thank you. All right, can we, um, hold a go on that vote then, please, I mean?
Yes, um, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Ms. Fasaro?
Yes.
Well, that was cheating.
That was painful.
Ms. Kim?
Awesome.
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
No.
Mr. Dashna?
No.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Sumino?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. We will work on the resolution for a later date, let you know.
Yeah, that one you're not gonna get for the next.
That's it, it's gonna be a little while.
Next year.
See, that's like.
It'll be for Christmas.
Holidays.
And it's only a week.
Expect that before Thanksgiving. Wishing everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
You won't be back, will you then?
I don't think so, right?
We have a.
Hey, how's track?
Oh.
Yeah, she lost, are you in next week? No, lose that, no, maybe not, so, just assume you're here.
Wow, wait a minute, wait a minute, are you doing, no, you're not doing the Democratic Committee?
No.
That's.
No.
Right, so we won't see you next week, happy Thanksgiving to you, that's great, great.
Thank you, everybody.
So, happy Thanksgiving. All right. The board, thank you. All right, so let's move on to, um, item ten. And this is regarding the zoning ordinance for zoning, oh, oh my gosh, did I, I don't know what I'm saying. Um, ordinance for the D B and D B two districts, and I did, I changed the agenda to say update rather than discussion for a very specific reason, right?
Yes.
So, that's why, if there's any confusion, um, because we had previously said that we didn't need further discussion as a board on it. Um, but, um. Are you, yeah, Beth?
Yeah, so I did my.
Beth is gonna give us an update on what's been happening in the background, which is rather well.
Um, so. Just, uh, this is about the ordinance that came before the planning board. I, I pulled the date, but it was probably a month ago, where we talked about the draft ordinance, and it was, it was, um, sorry. It was amending permitted uses for the D B one or the regular D B and the D B two district. And, uh, the board reviewed the ordinance, one of your, I think, I think the most significant comment was you wanted to see services be a permitted use along the first floor for. Um, for the D B one district, for the Main Street district essentially. And so that, that change has been made. In addition to the conversation I have with the board, I've also been having conversations with. Various folks, of course, the ordinance subcommittee, um, as well as the F C P, as well as the zoning officer to. Basically gather some input about the ordinance, and while doing so. Uh, one of the things that's happened is there are a variety of other, I would say, much more minor amendments that I anticipate. Going into a draft ordinance. After speaking with, uh, with zoning officer and the F C P and just understanding how. Uh. How the zoning ordinance is being interpreted, it became clear that there were a handful of tweaks that could be made to the ordinance that would. Basically. Uh, make the, make it easier for the zoning officer to do his job and for him to be able to make interpretations. Consistent with the intent of the ordinance. And I say it that way because what we can't do, we as a board, we as a planner, or even the council, can't. Tell the zoning officer, thou shalt interpret the ordinance this way, this is what that means, that is his job. But what we can do is hear how he's interpreting the ordinance as, as well as other, uh. Other things that he thinks would be helpful, and we can amend the ordinance to, to ensure that his interpretation. Is consistent with the intent of the ordinance, and so that's, that's a handful of, of additional amendments to, uh, for example. Is consistent with the intent of the ordinance. And so that's, that's a handful of, of additional amendments to, uh, for example. Um, uh, permitted uses that I anticipate happening, uh, not amendments to permitted uses, but amendments to uses. Uh, use definitions for permitted uses in the ordinance. So for example, uh, amendment to a medical office definition, not where medical offices is permitted necessarily. And there are a couple other, uh, uh, items that I'm looking at for, uh, expanding activities associated with accessory uses, but not new. Uses or structures necessarily. I think it's really about, uh, adding explicit language to the ordinance that had been. For many years, thought to be assumed or had been interpreted so based on your previous zoning officer, but. We've got a change of staff and I think that along with, uh, ideas for, uh, amending permitted uses, just necessitates. Updating the ordinance to, uh, to make sure that it's, uh. Being used the best way possible, consistent with the council and the, and the planning board's, uh, interpretations.
Hmm.
So, um, so that's a sort of a long-winded way of saying that the ordinance continues to be in development. I continue to be meeting with the subcommittee. I, I don't think I'm gonna need another meeting necessarily with the zoning officer, but meeting with the FCP and then, uh. The likelihood is that there will be ordinance prepared this week, introduced on Monday night at the council meeting, assuming we can. Uh, sort of get there and, and gather all comments and then it would come back to planning board for your typical master plan consistency review, any other comments you might have. And then we go back to council, obviously, for public hearing and a vote to determine if we're gonna adopt the ordinance.
So you're trying to make it easier for the zoning officer not to have to interpret what he thinks the ordinance means.
Well, I don't, I don't quite wanna say it that way, because it, you know, he's always gonna have to interpret the ordinance, but. You know, he, he has his own contacts and his own experience and he's interpreting the ordinance in ways that. That are not illegitimate, but are just a little bit anticip, unanticipated. And so it's, it's very easy for us to. Add some tweaks to how uses are defined to make sure that we're all seeing it in the same way. And what, one of the things, and correct me if I'm wrong here on a lot of the step, but since one of the things we're doing is getting rid of the S I C and A I C codes.
Mm-hmm.
I think for good reasons or we understand why we're doing that, but while it helps in some respects. It causes other issues because everything is not as black and white.
Oh, yeah.
So doing that and allowing the flexibility, but yet still making it clear as to exactly what it is that's intended to be done.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's important because we're gonna do it, want to do it right.
Yeah, and, and Jim, to your point also, the wording is reflecting. What we're hearing from the FCP and businesses of what. Modern needs are.
Right.
So allowing for those more updated needs of uses of their property and which. What use, we, we've been really careful to ask them what things are coming that are currently, but may be not. Covered by our current ordinance, uh, and, and that this would cover. Is that fair enough to say without being too specific?
Is just reducing the work from the board.
Well, it is.
Falling apart.
And that's, and that is, that is a consideration. Joking aside, it's not just for the board, it means that applicants. We should see less people having to come to us for interpretations. The idea is that the, the ordinances would cover. All, most of the things that are coming up that with the modern, uh, tenants are requiring. Um, and we should see less of that. Um, because also Beth, it can speak to part of the outreach as being to make sure that people will understand that they can. This is a long-term strategy. The, the interpret, it's only interpretations, we should have an immediate effect.
Hmm.
But the long-term strategy in terms of, um, what's allowed will gradually come and it's not going to be overnight. There exists. The non-conforming use certificate, we've been at pains to explain. Um, and any other aspects of that, we need to go over the, oh, we, we raised that. You raised that in the discussion part, the board understood those, I think. But just to clarify again, that that. Publicly, that that has, is being done is to explain that to people that may, will be affected by this. To understand the implications or the ramifications of the.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm actually meeting with the FCP on Monday. Uh, well, I'm meeting with. Uh, business owners that would like to attend the meeting with the Borough Planner. Or as organized and advertised by the FCP.
Kara, does it, does a change of ownership trigger anything for this? For, for a, a pre-existing non-conforming use?
Well, that's a loaded question.
We, we have, well. Well, no, like, well, we have said before, things like, well, if you have a, I don't wanna cite anything specific. A lawyer, a doctor, a dentist office, okay, randomly chose those. Um, as long as. Somebody else comes in and doctor matches doctor, dentist matches dentist, lawyer matches lawyer. You're fine, no matter who owns the building, you're always fine. Lawyer to lawyer, dentist to dentist.
Yes.
It's when somebody sells the building, because now anytime we put a restriction on a deed.
I, I, so that's where I'm, you're, I don't think the ownership of the building matters, it's the use.
The use, right, right? So, so, because that has come up, I, I gotta, I just wanna know if you were receiving this feedback. Um, on, you know, the, the property ownership and the devaluation of property with restrictions and. So just trying to think of how that, if, if you could work through that, but property ownership doesn't trigger, it's the, um.
It's the use.
And, and the other question I wanted to ask, just from an update perspective. When we first started talking about this, I believe the mayor even brought up something like buildings that were more conducive. And it's a sort of a squishy word, I guess, conducive, but so when you have a building that is not conducive. To retail.
Hmm.
Um, that. Is like, ha, is there anything that could be done from a, you know, whether it's form-based zoning? I, I don't really know what, what I'm, uh, what I'm asking, but I walked down all main, my DB one, DB two district, looked at every single building. And said, okay, I'm a retailer. Would I go into that building as a retailer, for example?
Hmm.
So I don't know if. I'm not even sure that the question I'm asking, other than the fact that if you could take that into consideration as you're putting the ordinance together, because that seems to be. Um, a question that comes up.
I don't, so, I, I think you're, I think the, the nature of the question is. Can we identify permitted uses based upon the building type or the building design essentially, right?
I, I, as I said, it's a little squishy. Remember, the, the mayor originally said, well, some things have been in office forever, some have been, you know, um. Uh, uh, and again, I'm, I'm just trying to think of non-retail uses, uh, the funeral. I'm, I'm just picking it out. I was trying to go down. The post office. I'm just trying to think of non-retail uses, um.
Well, before, before Beth answers that, if I can just add, because this is a thing that, as, you know, to, we've had discussions with the FCP and with council members. And it's my personal bug pad, is people keep calling it retail only, and it's not. There's a lot more than just retail that's allowed. So it, I think it's scaring people when we say this is retail only is allowed. It's not just retail. There's, there's retail sales, there's retail services, there's, right, Beth, remind me, we have alternations. There's so many things that are allowed.
I guess I, I.
It's, and it's, it's, and we've, we've asked the FCP to explain to us what, what is coming in that we need to make sure is covered under this. This is what, what, what are people looking to bring into Flemington? We wanna make sure that that's not excluded and we've. Made, made sure that, right, Beth, the, Beth's description.
Oh, that, that's a great, that's a great point, because I am using my insider knowledge of the word retail as our word is sites retail. Knowing that there's a plethora of things that you can choose for retail, um. And, uh, within the retail umbrella, services, we spoke of a great lens.
Afternoon things, um.
Yeah, so it's things like retail services, retail sales, restaurants, um, some indoor recreation, uh. Theaters, uh, as well as, uh, breweries, uh, for a couple of examples.
I'm just trying to make the point that there's options within that. Like, if, if the building is not good for this particular party, it could be good for one of the others, right? Or something along, and also we've got the non-conforming use.
Right.
Where if they currently have a tenant, then they have that non, that chance to do that and, and retain that.
And does anything, uh, the other thing just to consider, Beth, from an update perspective? And as you're going through and trying to work in, have all the different points of view. From an American Disabilities Act, from ADA perspective. Does an office require, I, I do not know this answer, right? And I apologize, because I know I can probably Google it, but you'll know the answer. Does, does an office use require different ADA compliance than a retail space?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I mean, they, they all need to be able to have like a, an accessible entryway into the building. You've gotta be able to serve. Uh, bathrooms for, for your customers. You've gotta be able to provide ADA parking to the extent that's applicable, you know, some of the sites don't park. Um, but no, I don't think there's a difference.
So the old houses that we have on, on Main Street, with ju, with just a set of steps.
Hmm.
I, I, I'm not sure, um, where that fits in, in. Converting that to even a restaurant, for example. Why, when we see a site planner, like, hey, how are you gonna get customers? You're gonna need to build a ramp. Yeah, we've seen that before. Um.
It's gonna be a building co-construction company.
Right?
Because if it's open to the public, that's when the ADA is gonna kick in. But by the same token. You know, we've dealt with this before with strictly site plan related issue, you know, um. Couple are coming to mind off the top of my head, but you know, are you required to create access if you're not really changing the building itself? Um, you know, I think that's, it's gonna fall within building or construction related issue, but certainly something that will need to be. Considered and addressed by an applicant in that type of situation.
Got it.
Which ever, whichever ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright. Oh, Adrian has a hand raise. Did you have something for, um?
Yes, what, so one of the things that's come up, I'm so sorry you guys, is the stock, the number of. Office locations in DB one and DB two. And which ones of those have been empty and for how long? And I'm have, I'm struggling with the idea of, we're keeping things strictly for office. And we're hearing it's gotta be office and we, they've been empty offices for too long for me to believe that that's. You know, is there really a market for strictly offices, some of these buildings? Um, that said, um. I am not opposed, and I know this came up very briefly in one of our, our subcommittee meetings, to having. A, um. If you have been an attorney and going to a, uh, you would like to be, now have that, rent that out as, let's say, a tax preparation service. It's not ideal. It's not the vision or how I envision Main Street, but it's not strictly about me. And what are the possibilities of sun setting now? So I'm not saying. I don't know, can we do that? And we say for, if we were to go down a path and Kara, maybe for you. Okay, we're going to, we're gonna flex to the building owners who've had. Empty offices on Main Street at eye level for several years. And, but we're going to give you two years to fill those. But we, this sun sets, we, I don't know what the possibilities are of that. But I, it's more to express my frustration that there is so much more than retail that is available. We have an arcade, we can have a billiard parlor. It's not just retail. Um, and I don't know how we get past that when I still see so many empty buildings when I walk down Main Street that are offices. That's all.
Yeah, and, and I really don't know the answer. Very good question. Um, I could certainly look into that. I don't know, but I'm just talking of. Necessarily a quote-unquote sunset provision.
Hmm.
Um, the abandonment of pre-existing non-conforming uses kind of serves to do that in a way. But that is the legal standard that needs to be met and there's intent that needs to be proven on the part of a property owner. Where that comes into place, to specifically intend to abandon that use and that does not mean. That just no one's been there for a year, if they consistently market it for office and it's, you know, in, in that respect. So I don't know if we're getting more into a discussion of this as opposed to an update. I don't know.
Yeah, because, and that, I, I wanna make sure, if anybody is listening, if anybody is probably, that, that. Kind of disincent, disincentive essentially, isn't it, to change, to just to, to change from what you are. That's not being proposed right now. That's not in, right? And that would be something that would cancel issue to, number one, we're trying to. We've suggested incentives, like they have the tax abatement program that the mayor mentioned, if any money they spend to change. Can be, there's a tax thing they can do and incentives or disincentives are for the council level, not for us to consider, right? That, that, to, in terms of in, in implementation.
Yeah, I, I.
And that's something for them to consider. That's not part of the ordinance right now.
And I was just trying to think of the separation of powers, right? Because hearing Adrian say that, I'm thinking, oh my goodness, like, what a.
Oh, a different path. It's more of a frustration as that we are, we are, um. The buildings have been empty for years. That's not my ideal. I'd like to see a billiard parlor. There's so many things that could be there. And it seems that we're, we're people, as Karen stated, they hear it's gotta be a clothing store or whatever and it doesn't have to be. There's some, by getting rid of these codes, we're opening so much up.
I just.
So many opportunities.
From a planning perspective, we have our role, right? Here's the ordinances, this is what works. Here's, here's the codes, here's the blah, blah, blah. But from an ordinance for, for, um, elected officials to then take our words and say. But could you consider this? It's a fabulous, like, like, e- exchange between council and planning boards.
And it's certainly starting a discussion of what, where, where, what is the vision and how we implement that vision on with using different things, incentives, you.
Well, incentives, sun settings, I even think there's panic on the streets that, um, are, I haven't been able to rent my building in two years. And now it's gonna take me another five. You know, that's the.
And I, I, that's why. To, to assuage those fears as much as anything, um, but they're very real, they're real fears, I'm not denying that, but it's, um, something that can be discussed. Um, but certainly there's option for that update of where it's at so that you know why, but it will be coming before us. Um, hopefully for, and, and, and certainly I want to thank Beth for all her work, because. With all the, um, input that she's been putting into this, uh, for everybody, she's really been listening to everybody's input and crafting language to. Make sure that those wishes are reflected. She mentioned that there's tweaks that the FCP had asked for for certain things, but those conditional uses and accessory uses. Might, they might be tweaks to our ordinance, but I think they're gonna make a massive difference for the tenants that we were hearing about.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, some of the words, some of the changes are three or, or eight words to a certain section or definition, but it's. It's a change that's gonna be well beyond just.
Really positive. Yeah, and, and part of the outreach to the FCP, they could read to, um. Ongoing from this would be more, uh, detailed, um, inventory of the buildings and which, uh.
Exactly.
Where, where focal points can be for help for different businesses, like which ones more likely to be able to be, uh, moved and changed if they want and what. What, I, what support, I, what support that could look like, right? Um, and that's certainly something ongoing that will probably come out Monday's discussion as well, if I'm sure. Um, okay. Thanks for the update. Yeah, keep your eyes peeled, um, not moving. Alright. So let's go on. Now this, this is one we've been kicking down the can, isn't it? They're kicking down the road, um, eleven. Public hearing slash resolution for twenty twenty four sixteen for the master plan historic district element. Now, this is separate from the map. I want to make people clear, right, that this is not, the map then is item twelve. This is where our master plan might need to be changed for the historic district element. We. We left this so in case things came back from council, is that right?
Yeah, so one of the, I mean, there were a couple of things, but, uh, there was one change that was anticipated to be made on the map and that was a garage.
Hmm.
For, uh, nine, nine New York Avenue.
Yes.
Yeah, um, so we, the board had decided, let's not take action now, knowing that that change may come. And, and frankly, maybe other changes will come too from, uh, from the council. And now fast forward to this evening, we know that the garage change has been made to nine New York Avenue. In fact. The element, the updated element that I had, uh, that I sent, Eileen was kind enough to distribute a little while ago. Includes that one change, although the rest of that element is entirely the same. And we know that the council has, uh. It is proceeding with the map as proposed with that one change as well. And so now we have. The potential of having a store preservation element match the store preservation map, which is great, because the map is also included in the element and that is exactly how it's.
Right. So then this item eleven, how do, how did we do that? And we're having a public hearing about this right now. Go ahead.
So we already did, yes, because we, we, um, and what, all we did was the health vote.
Right.
To see if there was anything else that we needed.
Oh, so we're piggybacking on the public that we did for the map. Okay, right.
Yes, so really, um, we need a motion in a second to adopt, in this case, it's resolution twenty twenty. Yes, so really, um we need a motion in a second to adopt, in this case, it's resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen. Um, and unless there's any other comments, um we've got the comments in there, which really, again, weren't any other than what Beth identified, which had been reflected in the revised master. Uh, uh, preservation element of the master plan, um, do you have a motion in a second?
I will.
Second.
Thanks. Alright, can we, um, have the vote? Yes, please, roll call on the vote, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Ms. Bissara?
Yes.
Champion?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Dashlin?
Yes.
Ms. Kuk?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman, Ms. Weitzman, sorry.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Samino?
Yes.
So the resolution will follow to that, no?
Yes, I want to put that voting.
Lots of resolutions to be written, um alright, so then item twelve is the ordinance twenty four, that's twenty three, consistency review. For amending the historic district, district map, gosh, it's.
I know, it's.
And then the, uh, glasses on, the historic district map zone boundary that was introduced ten fifteen twenty four. Um, a council, presume that's that date, right, and the second reading was eleven.
It's scheduled for.
Is scheduled for eleven twenty five twenty four.
Because this would just be, as Beth indicated, um more consistency with our master plan. Our master plan specifically the historic element that's now been amended pursuant to the vote that you just did, um to reflect. Thing of these changes, um so I'll let you weigh in consistency issue, but I think so. I think given the adoption that just occurred twenty seconds ago, it's entirely consistent.
So we're, we're, we're doing consistency with the change that we just made.
Yeah.
Alright, so. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Not this. Alright, can we have the, we roll call for the vote for that, please, Eileen?
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Actually, Mr. Shob is an alternate.
I guess.
Right now. Well, somebody can decide not to vote if they want.
I'll not vote for you, Dennis.
We need.
What is your like to?
People to not vote.
Well, I'll do alternate, if it's that.
Okay. Yeah, very good, so she's, um, alright, let me say that again, Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ms. Bissaro?
Yes.
Champion?
Yes.
Ashna?
Yes.
Ms. Juput?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Samino?
Yes.
And if we like to, I just like to say, I would have voted yes. Just, just so it's on the, on the, on the spectrum, just kidding, you know, just in case there's any question in the future. Um, alright, thank you, everybody, so, oh, gosh, here we go, we already got to this, yes. Um, chair items, item thirteen, next meeting is next Tuesday, um. Have a lot of fun next week, it's going to be a long one, I think. Right, because we've got two public hearings next week, so read your papers, um. We have the Democratic Committee, and we have the Liberty Village, and I'm, I'm gonna put it out there, I think Liberty Village is starting. So I I don't know whether we'll get through it in one, I don't know, there's a lot to review.
Consistency review for the ordinance on the D B and D B two, so.
Alright. Right, so we'll have a little bit of stuff there, um looking ahead even further, just so everybody's aware, um and that we've put it on as soon as we can. Did we get an answer from, um, the tea house, did you manage to speak to them, Cara, about putting it on the December ninth and noticing for that?
Well, I think I wouldn't do something I would put to that.
It's okay, I, 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 because I, I wanted to, I wanted them to know that we were gonna try to get them on as soon as possible, and I just.
Not knowing that you had spoken to Cara, I, um, today, because I had, um.
Steve was just here.
Well, I had said something earlier, you know, tonight, um, because Bob Claro had gotten back. With, um, possibly having completeness and public care on the side, but, but, that's right, I took the liberty of supporting that, so Steve rumored. He did respond, um, December tenth or the seventeenth would be great, we wouldn't be able to notice in time for the twenty seven, twenty sixth. And that's right.
We did talk about that.
So we, we do talk about that, and.
Yeah.
Um.
Right, thanks for raising that, because for the board, I wanted to let them know, although our procedure normally is to do consistency and then the public hearing separately. For this applicant, being as they're coming the second time, and so.
Most everything is on.
And our local, and we want to try and assist them as much as we can, if it's, uh, with the board's education, I did suggest that we could do it in one, in one meeting. Um, do the consistent move straight on.
The question is which one we wanna.
So which one, well, which one am I not coming for? I guess I'm the point, I'm not here on the tenth, so Jim will be, no, is it the tenth or the ninth? So the, the tenth, um, I won't be here on the tenth, um. It depends if Liberty Village goes, needs two meetings, that's my, that's my, I thought, do you remember saying, because we have, because we have the Democratic Committee. Are we going to get through the whole of Liberty Village as well in half nine?
Well, they could notice for the tenth, and if we do not yet have time to hear them, we may, we can just carry that to the seventeenth.
I don't think so. That's right. It's my, it's likely to be the second one. But I'd rather than know that head that it's, and why it would be, right, so then he can note, he can take note next week. If we have to carry the Liberty Village, we can tell them straight away that we're continuing, right? Then it would be the week after, yeah.
But he would probably need to notice. I would have him notice for the tenth, for the tenth.
Notice for the first day.
Have, yeah, have him notice for the tenth, and then, you know, again, with the understanding, you know, you know, that we have to carry, and we can continue to carry.
Right.
And if need be, we can carry in January, if we have to.
Yeah, I'd rather not, yeah.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I just wanna, I just, the view to moving it along for that, because I know they're having challenges, and I don't want this process to be a large part of their challenge.
And the only other thing at which, um, it's up to, um, the board whether I was going to put the twenty twenty five meeting dates together, um, for discussion, so I.
Yes.
You know, have that for next Tuesday, if we get to it, or at least on to the twenty, on to the tenth as well.
It, so, so the issue is trying to get, um, tea berries in as soon as possible, is that? I mean, and and I know that, I I mean, I know we get to the end of the year, and there's always all sorts of 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 inches at the end of the year. But for something not controversial, right, tea, I don't think tea berries is controversial, like, and I know the mayor at the beginning of the year said, and I don't want any special meetings. But couldn't there be an option for a special meeting for tea berries?
Well, we're hoping that we don't need that, because we've got the two meetings, right, so if Liberty Village is on the, is a. Next, the next meet and the meet, you're thinking, you're, I use, Liberty Village, but the rest of my meeting.
I asked this of Beth, right, from an area need of redevelopment, uh because, you know, the board. Trying to think of the the majority of our board, have they sat through an area need of redevelopment, which is really not. They're not as normal, I shouldn't say normal, they're not as straightforward, because we're going off of what the council has declared as. That, you know, what's allowed and what's not allowed, so it's really like gone under the days, well, I'm not sure I agree with what you, well, but the council, we have less, so, here we get through it.
We, we have less. Well, we.
In.
I see what you're saying, because if we need, we need to read the redevelopment agreement to know that we're, that's what we're basing our decisions, it has to match that, right?
Yes. Yes.
Rather than.
Rather than, there's so, right, any applicant that comes in, there's so much to think about, and oh my goodness, what about this, and what about that, and have we thought about traffic, and have we thought about, this is.
Yeah, there's a, there, it, the board has less jurisdiction over the application by virtue of how the redevelopment plan was crafted, which included. A concept plan that said the developer, in the redevelopment agreement says, basically, the con- the developer has got to build this. So to the extent that the board might, under typical circumstances, say, you know, we don't like those buildings over here, that's a problem, why don't you put those over there and move the road from A to B, et cetera. That type of discussion is largely outside of your scope for this upcoming application, but all of the other. Smaller aspects of the development, like is the lighting okay, are the trees okay, um, are the. A lot, a lot of that, most of that remains, now, there might be alternative standards set forth in the redevelopment plan, but the board still has the ability to review it. Um, so while, yes, the board's scope is is significantly smaller than it might be if this were just a conventional, uh, site plan application. But the board's role here is still, uh, there's still much about the project that was un, that was not engineered and unrefined. When the redevelopment plan and agreement were, were adopted.
So it's still could, that's quite a large project.
Yes, and it depends how many members of the public we get.
Yeah, here's the suggestion, um, even, uh, so the. Liberty Village is coming in on the twenty sixth, if it does continue. Through, um, just the setting the agenda, we could, because I don't think that tea berries or have a hundred and tea will take very long.
Right.
Um, we could put them in the first, because it is amended, it's not a new application, so.
You mean, put them on, on the tenth?
They do kind of sense, no, on the tenth.
On the tenth.
But the first.
Oh, do it before continuing.
Before continuing the Liberty Village, which that's a much larger.
I like this, why we pay you a big price, I like that idea, yeah, can we, we can do that, right?
I mean, just to be able to help.
Like the chair.
That, well, that's, that's exactly my intent.
It's something that could probably take.
Then they know where they're going.
A shorter amount of time.
Exactly. Let's do that, let's have them notice for that and say that we'll give them that consideration, I think that's.
They're gonna be noticed for the tenth, and they'll go first on the agenda before any continuation of Liberty Village.
And we'll let Liberty Village know the same next week, that if it continues, we already have that, if we have that.
I mean, you have the chair, have the authority, because they need to have an agenda vote.
I, I, I think.
I'm like, that's, you have a meeting, it's, um.
Combating.
Now, if, if, if you do put them on first for the tenth, then we don't get the Democratic Committee, doesn't that make the Democratic Committee?
Well, they'll be done before Liberty Village.
Oh, was not, I thought this was the, I thought Liberty Village first.
No, no.
No, no.
Oh, I thought, I'm, I'm sorry.
They were deemed complete first, they were.
They were deemed complete first, so we're going in order.
They've already noticed for it and continued, so.
Yes, it's all done. So that's why I was saying, what, what, how much of Liberty Village we get to, because it depends how long that one goes. I don't know how long that's gonna be, I have no idea, um, okay, so. As long as the board think that's a good idea, we'll go forward on that basis, I think that's great, thank you. And yes, Eileen also mentioned in that discussion there that she'll be pulling together some dates, talking to Carla too, to coordinate dates for next year, we usually look at those for next year. And review them, so come thinking about dates that might cause any conflicts, um, but main with our usual dates for next year, second.
Ah, Memorial Day, uh, Veterans Day.
Well, there's, but it's fairly personal, people can bring that up, right? Be prepared to bring that up, we'll throw those to Eileen to bring up a calendar for next year. And I vote for not doing one, but we've got each other, I don't know, I don't know how we agreed to this one, but we'll get it. I'm not looking forward to the fact we got this week and then next Tuesday, I'd just like to have that gap back to back.
Especially when there's one on Thanksgiving weekend, we all know my apprehension of Thanksgiving weekend meetings.
Well, let's, I know, but we've got a lot to do, Todd, that's the thing, we have to slow these people down. Alright, so that said, I don't have any more, and I love the fact that the time is the time, so, um, uh, item four.
The only thing under Chair Items with, with the signage that came up, um, I know we never met as a sign review committee, and we had a lot of issues. But this was one of the things we wanted to look at, and I didn't want to say it ba- based on part of the application. But the amount of our businesses that have covered one hundred percent of their window, I mean, uh, and again, I'm going off of memory. Both liquor stores, the mattress store, Burlington Co Factory, the dentist, uh, I believe Staples covers that, I mean, it is, it's a thing out there that people are doing this, so why not try to. Catch it if we can and say, this would be a better option, even though you can't write an ordinance for everything. But I mean, I can draft something and circulate it amongst the sign review committee that says, listen, we might want to consider this, because it's coming. Um, and I think that some things you don't really realize that people do it, like, even though they're not in the borough, like Jeff was talking about, like, think of Harbor Freight, one hundred percent their windows. You don't know their windows, they're just block white, there's a wall behind them.
That's not in the borough.
But it's not in the borough, but those are the examples, and that was outside, but these are all in the borough, and I believe they've all done this.
Um, and they certainly agree that, um, we usually have our end of year, uh, suggestion of what we've given, the variants we've given, I'll review it.
It could be, it could, that's true, you can do that as well.
I, for me personally, it's certainly gonna trigger that, I think, it triggers a review of our sign owners, probably for the opposite reason that you're thinking. I want a review to let's be expressly say whether we want this or not.
No, but that's, I think we can come up with things that.
It's being, in that district, in that district, I don't think we give you.
Right, that you could say, if you have to, ye- yes, if you have to cover a window, this is the way it gets done, that, you know, that.
I certainly, this has raised, uh, a loophole that we need to discuss and think about for sure, and I think that needs to go into that review.
And especially, you know, zone by zone, district by district, where you can get, um, like I said, witness.
Especially if we want to allow this in that zone, but nowhere else, we need to, that's not expressed, right? If you, so something like that, we need to like say, it's allowed over here, but no, oh, I would with floods out, right? I think that's definitely a discussion that needs to happen next year. Alright, so, um, if nobody else has anything, I don't, um, item fourteen bills, I, did I miss, no, we didn't get any, did I see any bills coming along?
There were bills, there was, um, in late, and, and.
Yeah, I saw them.
I used, I missed them for all.
I, I'll move that we voted the bills.
Thank you.
There's some from, you know, twenty second and.
Yeah.
I must have been talking to my husband or something, I'm sorry, um, alright, so we have the motion to order the bills, can we have the roll call, please?
Do we have a second?
Good evening, sir, thank you, Jim.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Bissaro?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Giffen?
I'll have to stay in that room.
Mr. Duff?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Samino?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, um, do we have need to vote for executive session, we are, oh, yes. And a good answer, good answer, um, alright, item sixteen, motion to adjourn. Alright, I'll move favor.
I. I.
Good time, everybody, see you next Tuesday.
We got one video before.